Okay, welcome. I'm Tim Skoggins, Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order on Monday, February 5th, 2018. First, I need to ask, does any member of the Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
Next up, approval of minutes. We have set a minute for our special meeting on January 29th, 2018, that were circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
Supposed, some of them.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Any discussion, additions, or corrections? All in favor of approving the minutes for January 29th as circulated, say aye.
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 Abstained.
And one abstention, so those minutes are approved 3-0-1. And item number four is warrants. First one I have is payroll warrant number 15 in the amount of $23,653.42.
So.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So payroll warrant number 15 in the amount of $23,653.42 is approved by a vote of 4-0-0. Next, I have a special check warrant number 23 in the amount of $1,228.8.
So move.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. This is an overpayment of income tax that we're refunding. Any other discussion?
Property tax. Is that income tax or property tax?
Our property tax, yeah. You knew what I meant.
For the record, property tax.
Yeah, the Select Board is not instituting an income tax. We wish to live.
That was actually an overpayment, yeah, an overpayment that I tried to return. It was returned three times by the post office, so I decided it became a credit the next year because I just could not get...
Wow.
That guy who accepts just $1,200.
Huh.
You know, and he's not on our records yet, so he's got a credit sitting out there.
Okay, okay, but we're writing a check here, it seems.
Yeah. Oh, oh, no, I guess that's right. There were two of them.
Okay.
This is why we did track down.
This is the other one.
There were two of them.
Okay, okay, right. All right, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So check warrant number 23 in the amount of $1,228.8 is approved 4-0-0. And I have check warrant number 24 in the amount of $50,573.86.
So move.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. On this one, major items are $4,200, $2,700, and $2,900 to American Rock Salt, $1,900 to Bennington County Sheriff, $1,800, $2,000, and $1,800 to G.A. Bove Fuels, and $1,800 to Sullivan &amp; Powers for our annual audit, $6,800 to TAM, $1,500, $8,200, $2,500 to William E. Daley. Any other discussion?
It's for gravel.
Winter sand.
Sand.
All in favor of approving check warrant number 24, say aye.
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 So check warrant number 24 in the amount of $50,573.86 is approved 4-0-0.
Are they using the unsalted sand when it's above freezing, Dave?
It's mixed in here. They probably are going over to Daley's to get it when it's above freezing.
Yeah.
So it's not being used on the road. The stuff here is mixed in.
I mean, you know, it's just the cost of the thing.
Yeah.
Plus, it works better. You can save a pile of money that way.
Are there any announcements? A few things. As per our appointment policy, I want to announce that we have candidates for appointed office. These are all reelections, reappointments to the Development Review Board. Tom Nucherek has raised his hand for another three years, as has Chris Penessi. And on the Planning Commission, Chris Williams has agreed to serve for another three years. Unfortunately, we forgot to reappoint him in 2017, so we're reappointing him to a three-year term that started in 2017. And the public is invited to make comments on these candidates if they would like. The other announcement is about documents for town meeting. The warning and the town report are both up on the website at shasberryvt.gov. You should be getting a postcard in the mail any second now, if you didn't already, advising you of that, as well as telling you when it will be available in printed form at Cole Hall.
And just a reminder, it will be the 14th. We had a couple of people, the postcards have arrived, and we had a couple of people come in today for printed copies. They were kind enough to come back another day, but the printed copies will not be at Cole Hall till the 14th.
And it's online?
No. Yes.
Yeah.
Are there any public comments? Does not look to be any public. Treasurers Report. Melanie Dexter, welcome.
Hello.
Oh.
Let's look at the cash flow first.
Yeah.
Let's go to the top. Um, you've already seen half a base from the last meeting. There's nothing particularly interesting going on.
Okay.
Standard. You can look down at the bottom. You can see how we're doing versus budget. And I wrote a little note down there because if you're eagle-eyed, you might notice that our revenues look like they're tiny but lower than last month, which shouldn't make any sense. The reason for that is the money we got from the Grandview Cemetery, we didn't really know where to park it. And so we parked it in, just because we got the check, I had to put it someplace. So we put it in the general fund, but that was not where it was destined to live. And we ended up sending it to the trustees, but since it was on the opposite sides of the fiscal year change, it looks like a big, a hit to revenue. And I have a call in to Jordan at Sullivan Powers because that doesn't seem like the right way to have done the accounting. So I have a question. I think that it will not be appearing as a negative revenue, which is just silly. So that's what you'll see. So the bottom line is, if you look at our revenue there versus budget, it looks like we're 4% below where we were last year at the same time. That's the explanation for it right there.
Okay.
Everything else is exactly on target to be a normal revenue year. And you can see our expenditures are, they're a little bit behind last year. And I think that was intentional. There was some extra spending we did last year that's in my Treasurers Report and the town report. But so anyway, revenues and expenditures versus budget, with that one caveat, are completely normal and looking good.
Looking good.
The other thing I wanted to talk about is municipay. I have an update. I actually finally managed to have my, this sort of a, they call it a kind of a training session, but it was actually a sales call, basically. But since I was already sold before it started, I asked her to send me the documentation I needed to fill out. And 18 pages later, I got all that stuff filled in. I got it sent off to her. I'm still waiting for one document from the bank since I want to be able to take payments to our reserve account for water money. It's a different bank account. And so I'm waiting for a letter from the bank to allow me to set up that ACH payment for the reserve account. And they're dragging their feet about a little bit. I'm not sure why. But as soon as they have that last document, I'm going to be able to go forward with the technical aspect and get it up. I think that the main thing is having it set up on our website with a button to take them to the municipay website directly, so, which is secure for any transactions. And then we're going to be able to start taking credit cards, probably, well, you know, everything always takes longer than you think, so I don't want to promise, but I hope by March.
Okay. Well, that's, that'll be cool.
It'll be cool.
Yeah.
When it happens, it'll be cool.
Yeah.
Any questions about any of that?
Good job.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you. Road report.
All right, let's see. Well, let's start with the overtime so far. We're about 128% of budget, which is a little over 5,000 over budget, which isn't a terrible issue to deal with. We did raise the overtime in fiscal '19 budget to address this, but overall, I think they've done a great job with the roads this winter. Haven't had hardly any complaints at all. We've, of course, hit an occasional mailbox, but we've taken care of that. That does happen. Kenny, you were asking before about sand. We have used 59, as of Friday, as of tonight, actually, we've used 59% of the sand budget, so we still have a substantial amount to go there, and 71% of the salt budget. So we're in a good position for going into the second week of February as far as funding that through the end of the season. And the overtime mountain was through last Friday, so, you know, that'll increase a little bit. We have a big storm coming Wednesday, which will consume some time going into Wednesday evening, and then again Thursday morning, because it's supposed to stop snowing sometime Wednesday night. Other than that, we're keeping the equipment up. We're going to start a new person on sidewalks. The gentleman who'd been helping us for years on sidewalks has decided he'd like not to do it any longer, so we have someone else to do that. And we're working on that piece of equipment, which is kind of a pesky equipment, but we didn't pay much for it. And it was slated to be replaced this year anyway, so we're looking at alternatives to it already. It's a great piece of equipment. Ours is just really old and a lot used and has its issues.
Are we going to shop around for something used or brand new?
You know, right now, there's called Steiners and something tech. I just forgot the name of it, but...
What about leasing options?
Leasing doesn't really work municipality. It's better for us to own it. But the big thing we're going to look at is versatility. You know, the Valtech, I think it is, or the Steiner, they're like articulated bodies. They can have brushes. They can have brushhobs. They can have all kinds of things put onto it. We don't want to get one thing to do one thing, one piece of equipment that does multiple things.
A multi-tool.
Yeah, because, you know what, you know, you can't buy it for the winter. Let's buy it for four seasons. The Valtech and the Steiner both have high-powered blowers. Remember, we were talking about getting a high-powered blower to blow the leaves out before we grade in the winter because the leaves interfere with everything, and this fits on the front of that. So, you know, we're not in a rush to buy this. This thing we have now is going to make this winter no matter what, and then we're looking into different things to purchase. New, used, we'll see. We haven't got that big number for what it is new, so it might be a used market. Because a lot of this stuff isn't cheap, but this thing just needs to be replaced. Our backup is this old John Deere that's hanging out back there. So, well, we'll get through this winter. It's, the one we have, it'd be great to get one of those, but that's like a ludicrous amount of money. So we're looking into options now. Some of these smaller things are really worthwhile, like the Valtech can even mow the steep part of the cap if you adjust it correctly, which is an interesting thing. So, you know, there's lots of options, lots of equipment out there. It's all just shopping around, finding a good price, but it will be a multi-tool. It's not going to be a snowplow.
Check on that, I believe it's in May, the state has a...
The state often, yeah.
... production.
Yeah, I'm linked into that.
Because you get stuff up there wicked cheap.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not hurt either.
No, some of it's good. Last year wasn't a very promising lot they had.
Yeah, well, it varies every year.
Yeah, I mean, another year you can see something that, I'm not opposed to used vehicles, you know, I mean...
Well, you have some of the US surplus, you can probably grab something that cheap.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how that would work.
Some of that stuff is good. Some of it's problem. Some of it isn't really fitting. And, you know, there's two ways of looking at that. I mean, it's supposed to be if you buy it, you use it. You're not supposed to like roll it over, so. We have an old Army dump truck back here that runs great. We use an old Army loader back here that runs great. And we have an old forklift in the corner that can't get rid of for scrap, so. Some work, some don't. So it's, fortunately, they don't cost that much to start with, but there's other problems with replacement parts and things like that that come up. You know, because the John Deere that they paint green and sell to the Army has different parts than the John Deere they sell over in Greenwich. So, you know, we have to watch all that stuff. There's different parts to it.
The main thing with that, Dave, is the military stuff is all 24-volt.
Oh, okay. Well, there's one I didn't know. Okay.
Yeah, because they're all, they're multi-tool and the power is all that.
Yeah, yeah. But so we're looking to correct our deficiency with the snowplow, but the snow sidewalk machine, but it will be multipurpose. Whatever comes out will be a multipurpose tool. Where it's going right now, I'm not quite sure.
Could something like that also be used as a, like a street sweeper?
Yeah, so that's the, it has a brush attachment. That's what we're looking for. That we would mostly use for intersections to get the gravel back, even all the paved aprons that we have around town, you knock the gravel off with those things. We can use that in different areas, even around Howard Park. But we still, we have agreement with North Bankton. They bring their sweeper around twice a year. They have a real sweeper, you know, and that's why you'll see one of our things down there being used to do something down there. So it's not worthwhile for both of us to have a sweeper to...
True.
... hardly ever use. So we have little deals like that with them. Works out for both of us.
Used about twice a year?
Yeah, twice a year, yeah, yeah. Then he got his, from one of those government sites, and it runs, you know. Runs enough to get around. She asks me at North Bankton, so...
Does the job.
Does the job, so.
All right, thank you, Dave. Item nine is reappointment of the zoning administrator. Chairman of our Planning Commission is here. Chris, is that why you're here, to talk about reappointing our zoning administrator?
Well, more of the things.
Okay, well, join us, please.
Thank you. I would say that Shelley Styles, our zoning administrator, who's been with us three years, is probably the best person I've seen in the job over a 15-year period serving on the Planning Commission. She understands how town government works, and she understands how it relates to the state entity and what the limits of town government are. And so in that respect, she's really valuable to us. And, you know, because of the recession that we're just now starting to come out of, there hasn't been a ton of activity for her office. But she has a good command of how to research questions that come up at the DRB and the Planning Commission. There's a state listserv of zoning administrators that she taps into regularly to see, well, what are they doing in Berry? What are they doing in Norwich? What are they doing in Brattleboro on a question? And zoning presents a lot of questions that are less than 100% clear. And so she's got good skills in that department. I think that she is good at helping the public. I haven't used her services, but, you know, zoning is kind of an opaque area, and general public only has a slight understanding of it. And I think Shelley's very good at helping people through the application process, and if they have to go before the DRB, explaining what might be involved there, and looking at the particulars of the individual cases. Because of the new GIS mapping software that the town has invested in, we have the ability to handle the actual physical piece of mapping land use issues much more accurately. And so she's been quick to take up on that. Think that from her description, there's more layers to this system that probably the town needs to invest in so that it can be more effective. GIS is a multi-layered mapping system that covers just a huge amount of areas. And a lot of these are of interest to us, and the state is mapping this way so that we get tapped into their products. I guess the only other issue to talk about is enforcement. We, when we hired Shelley, we felt like this might be her weak suit. She just didn't have the personality to be a zoning cop, and this has been borne out. Still, she's not afraid to jump in and handle citizen complaints, and she's cautious in the sense of understanding the limits of her knowledge in terms of legal issues, procedural issues. So this is the kind of person we want in this office who's going to kind of not jump up and get all excited when people complain about this, that, or the other thing. So I, you know, in summary, I would just say, we've got a good person in this job, and there's finally some longevity there, which we had been lacking previously. And so we're starting to build up a little institutional memory of like how these things get handled, and what are the issues that are particular to Shasberry, so that can only serve us well.
Good. Any questions, comments from the Board?
We did a rigorous review process with her at the last meeting of the Planning Commission, at which time she submitted a report of her activities, and board members asked her questions and so on, and we had a give-and-take discussion. So this isn't just kind of off the cuff. We actually have a process.
I think in one of our discussions a while ago, that there was something said that people used to make out hand-drawn sketches of what they were going to do for a placement of a building or something. And I think we changed it to they had to be placed by an engineer.
Well, insert the situation, Kathy.
Yeah, well, what I'm thinking is, could this, this mapping thing you're talking about, cannot be used in place of an engineer doing something to place an item on the... Because I get really concerned when you get engineers involved in all this, and you're making extra cost for people to apply for a permit.
Well, okay, on the other side...
And I'd like to try to keep that down.
I understand, and I don't want to burden the public unnecessarily, but the quality of the applications was really terrible.
Oh, I don't, I don't, because I went out and checked out one of them one time for somebody myself.
How can you pass judgment when the thing you're looking at isn't even accurate?
I know.
So, yes, to answer your question, the mapping software does have the capability of doing this. We don't want to be in a position where Shelley is producing application material for people. I mean, this, it's got to be a little bit of an adversarial process.
I think it might actually be illegal for her to do that.
Well, yeah, I hope it's illegal. So, you know, she can provide them a printout of a lot map.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I'm all for anything that can keep the cost down to a taxpayer or to an applicant.
Yeah, and so am I.
You know.
And just as a reminder, Ken, the, this requirement for a design professional in a site plan is for commercial properties.
Right.
Somebody wants to widen their driveway, they don't have to go to a...
Oh, no, no, I mean, I understand that, Tim, but what I'm saying is, and I don't care if it's commercial or private or whatever, I just am not one for making the government cost any more than it absolutely has to.
Well, as Chris has pointed out too, you know, it does cost us if we issue a zoning permit or a DRB decision based on faulty information. That can come back.
No, no, I understand that, but it's just like I say, it's just, I have this thing personally about government costing people.
Okay, well, you know, if you want to support making it happen at the local level, recommendation from the Planning Commission is that they need a color printer to print out the product of this GIS mapping system so that they can send the applicant out with a document.
Right.
This is not an extravagant expense, and we've cut the cost of zoning in the last budget, or the coming budget, I should say. So this is a small expense that we need to support the listers and the zoning administrator to utilize something we've already invested in. So please buy a printer.
We need to buy a color printer?
Color printer, yes, sir.
Do we really need to buy a color printer, Dave?
It's really not that big an expense for these maps. A little bit of the map they'll send out. We'll have one, the new one is not color compatible, but we don't want to generate that volume. Up here, we can have one color printer that we can use for color when needed. The maps would be the only thing that would ever be printed in color. And the maps will print bigger than this.
Mm-hmm.
So it would only be, able to be segments. And we are redoing, because Jim from the assessor office basically was the main guy who was setting up all this mapping, all this stuff. When we all sat down, the listers and Shelley and I sat down with the AI, we discovered all these new fields and things we can do with this system that we're going to work with them to enhance our abilities to use what we already have. The color printer would have some value for those who would like the color on it. I mean, other than the aerial photographs, I don't know how much difference it would make, but we could do it. It's not, you're right, though. It's not, the volume of color copies we would print, it certainly wouldn't be excessive, you know.
Could Staples do something?
It's a huge volume at all.
Oh, okay.
Going down.
Throwing it out there.
Yeah, well, no, because running back and forth to there would be a nightmare. And but, yeah, I mean, one desktop printer up here, which is all it would be, that has color capability. Because I remember when I first came here, that was one of my questions, like, we don't have a color printer, you know, just...
And that was how many years ago?
That was a while back. So, yeah, one isn't a big deal. We're going to work it in when we see the capabilities of this new system as it develops, because he's coming back, and Shelley's going to work with him and the listers as soon as we go ahead and all this settle. We're a little bit behind because our new appraiser has left already to go work for the state, just like our last assessor did. So as soon as we get a new appraiser or assessor, we're going to bring them into the system and get this thing worked up, because they can use it more. Shelley can use it more. I use it downstairs, and it does things I didn't know. So we're working on it, you know.
Okay. Well, we can certainly look into that. That's not a big expansion. So you want to wait a few months until we get all the personnel in place?
Well, we can buy to run off what we can run off now. It'll probably be, this place might be ripped to pieces or rebuilt, I should say, within hopefully a few weeks. So I think it would be after that.
Okay, all right. Well, look into that and give us your recommendations then. Go ahead and buy one. We're talking...
Yeah, any standard thing, that will come from Staples. I'll just order one online. Yeah, any standard thing, that will come from Staples. I'll just order one online.
Yeah, okay.
A simple one, that's all it would be.
That's in a routine purchase category. All right. We'll do it.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to, let me first ask, does the zoning administrator, is she appointed year by year?
No, three-year term.
Three-year term. Is there a motion to appoint Shelley Stiles as zoning administrator for a three-year term?
So moved.
So moved by Tony?
Taken.
Taken by Ken. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So Shelley Stiles is appointed zoning administrator for a three-year term, 2018, March 2018 to March 2021.
Right, sounds right.
Thank you. Was there something else you wanted to talk to us about?
Well, I see mine ain't on the agenda.
Already been done.
Oh, already done?
You were appointed to 2028.
Oh, yes, yes.
Never.
Yeah. We were, we were not appointing you exactly. We were, as per our personnel, our appointment policy, we were announcing that you had raised your hand and inviting people to make comments. And we will appoint you in April.
Fair enough.
Okay. Thank you. Town Garage Transfer Station Project, our regular weekly placeholder for news about that.
Yeah. The only major announcement is that no alternate building system was proposed. So the building system that all the bids will be based off is the Morton Building. And that's not going to be due, even minor parts of that, it's really only the eight general contractors who have the bid will be responding to that. Now, start with questions back to Goldstone. As you saw, I sent around some of their things for the addendum. When the addendum's done, and we'll just move slowly towards the March 9th bid opening. But it's, it's pretty much a closed group at this point of the eight general contractors who already have the bid documents out.
Good.
And that's really it for it for right now. There's nothing else going on.
Okay.
But we did get our wastewater and our, our water permits, so finally issued.
Good.
And all the others are on track or we have already, so.
We have all of our permits.
We have, well, one, one more they're working on. One isn't complete, but they're all in line. They're all going to be done.
Okay. Good. Okay. Any other business? Dave, do you have anything?
No, I have nothing else but today.
All right. Murd, you came in late. Did you want to talk to us?
I invited you.
Oh, my goodness. I forgot all about it, too. Yeah. I forgot to put it on the agenda, so I'm glad you showed up. Yes, Murd.
I didn't put it on the agenda, but I figured maybe you were expecting me.
Yeah. It's just, you know, my brain. Please come up. Murd is here to talk about Taconic Community Grange and their request to renew their tax exemption on their building for another five years.
Well, I don't know how much you know about the Grange.
I don't know a lot, so tell us a little about it.
Well, I'm not going to give you a history on it, but our Grange is, was formed in 1929. And the National Grange celebrated their 150th anniversary last year. A nonprofit, nonpartisan fraternal organization. And they advocate for rural America and agriculture. Right after the Civil War, Oliver Kelly was sent down to the South by the President to see what might be done to get the rural people going. Gun fires were destroyed. And he came back, made recommendations, but he got together with six other people and formed the Grange. And the Grange, at one time, well, they do a lot of lobbying. We have, we own the only private building in the center of Washington, right, right in the, it's all government around there. But there's one building that is owned by the Grange. And then they, on the state level, they lobby. The state troopers, we were very instrumental in starting, Vermont State Troopers. And on the national level, rural electrification, rural free delivery was all spearheaded by the Grange. That's enough about the national. We purchased our hall in 1945. And the old days, we had many dances, receptions, all kinds of things going on in the Grange. And over the years, I would say probably in the 90s, we had a school that for about 10 years, this lady had a school she held. That stopped. And about 10 years ago, we were about ready to maybe have to sell our hall. We didn't have any income to speak of. Jackie Myers came along, a little peep school, and we've been renting to her. And we rent at a nominal fee. We, we could get a lot more for the building than we do, but we're not trying to make a big profit from renting. But she takes care of some of the expenses. But years ago, we ran the farmer's market. It's been over 20 years, wasn't it? It's quite a stretch.
Never got into that.
Well, every Saturday morning, in the schoolyard, the farmer's market held. And we finally, you know, people get a little tired of working every Saturday morning. So others took it over, but it kind of faltered after that. We've, we've recognized more than 35 local people, a community citizens award. In, in I don't know how many years, we've given dictionaries to the North Bennington and Shatsbury School. They call it Words for Thirds. It's a national project. The kids just love it. They've got something that can look things up without jumping on the computer. And every year we present them, it's, it's amazing how much they seem to enjoy that. And one of our Grangers did a lot of work in mapping the old part of Grandview Cemetery. Got that all finished up. And as you know, we, we bought five signs for the cemeteries. They're kind of expensive, but we were, we were trying, we're trying to think of things we can do for the community. We, our membership can't physically go out and do all these things we did. I, you remember, Ken, it was quite a few years ago, when the Grange went up to the Waite Cemetery. We worked two or three weekends. We had 30 or 40 people working. We had a tractor in there, cutting trees, brush, got it all cleaned up, installed a new gate, and came in and said, select board. It's all yours now. Keep it up. And they have. And we used to be able to do things like that. And we, we wanted to do some renovation on your benches out here in front by the memorial. The boards are all rotting out. And we figured, use composite material and refurbish those. And we're looking to, you know, what other improvements we might make in, in our town. So we're just asking the community, would help keep that going. Because our membership, there was over 300 members one time in the town. I would say that was back in the 50s.
Where's the membership at now?
28.
28?
We're, we're like so many organizations.
You're almost extinct.
The, the young people, they've got so much on their plate.
Yes, it's a busy...
They don't want to get committed. Every organization's going through this. But we want to keep going as long as we can. That's the basic pieces of it.
And, and you said you bought signs? You, you bought signs for the cemetery?
Yeah, there's five new signs and the town also bought two, so they would have the two entrances. Those are $500 apiece.
Well, where do you buy those?
John Wood, a member of our Grange, came up with the idea. And he did all the research, finding out where the best place to get them. Did you get them from the same place?
Yeah, I don't remember where they are.
I can't, I cannot remember. But they're, they're...
They're very nice.
Very nice material.
Are they metal, metal signs, aluminum?
It's, it's, it was like a metal. It's a little weather well.
Yeah, it's a composite. I don't know just what...
But they're built, they're built to last.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
$500 a sign, they better be.
Unfortunately, you don't see one all the time because the one here right in the village, we had to put an extension on the post. It hasn't gotten done. And it got too late to get it in the ground. So it's going to be spring.
Spring.
Before we, because it had to be put up on the inside of the fence and it slopes off there. And if you put it in for the post, it would have been down to the sidewalk. So we had pressure treated the post and that hasn't gotten done. But the others at Grandview and the center.
Yep, they're all, they're all out. All the other ones are out. That one ran into a few problems earlier.
So that's, if you have any questions.
Any questions? All right. Well, thanks, Murd. I wanted to, you know, give you a chance to speak to the public and let them, you know, know why...
Did I miss a public comment?
Yes, sure.
I did.
Yeah. You know, let them know what your organization does and why you deserve the tax break on that.
Well, I'm going to put a letter in the paper, too.
Good, thanks.
That's a good idea.
And it's in the town report. I believe it got in there.
It is in there, yes.
And so I think that's...
It's in the newspaper, too.
Here's the town, here's the town, right there.
Yep.
Is the budget going to be on the website?
Yes, yes.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, the town report's in four parts this year.
I didn't see budget.
Yeah, there's a...
I printed the financial part.
It's in the appendix C, the financials, the, the, the budget that we use for planning, the spreadsheet.
I, I got the expenditures and budget and actual for ending June 30th, 2017, but I couldn't find 2018.
2018, no.
Well, that's the one we're going to vote on.
We're in 2018. We're going to vote on 2019. What we...
Well...
And we're reporting on last year, 2017.
Yeah, we voted on 2018 last year, that's right.
Yeah.
But that's going to be in there. Or is in there.
What, what is in there? The, the budget planning spreadsheet, which compares on 18 and 19 that we use when we go through and plan the 2019 budget that we'll be voting on this year. Yeah, that's in there. And then the current year, it's always hard to, to, to display it, to explain it, because we spent half of, you know, the money and, you know, revenues and expenses don't track exactly right. So we don't, we don't have an accounting yet for 2018. But we do have the accounting for 2017, both from NIMRIC and also from the audit that was just completed. And those are in different parts of the town.
Yeah, I know. You had the, when I went to the financials, what I got was the professional audit.
The audit is its own document. Yeah.
Well, I went under your site and it says, financials, I believe.
Yeah.
I didn't find it very easy to get through.
The audit report?
No, the whole thing. The new website.
Oh, well...
Maybe it'll get familiar, I don't know.
Did you look today, Murd, or was it before the weekend?
This afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Because it was updated this morning, too.
Yeah, I've been updating it all day long, actually. But on the front page, there's the, a link to the town report.
Okay.
And then...
I went into documents.
There's also a news item, yeah. And they both take you to documents.
And I went to financial, detailed financial statements.
Right.
And what I found there was the professional...
In, in this one, there are the documents that the treasurer normally publishes, plus a summary of expenditures and...
Page 34 to 40.
Page 34.
And one time I had to print that, I asked for 34 to 40 and it printed out through to 37. The only way I could get 38 to 40 was to ask for 40 through 42. But all that, it's got so much, I go, I've worked on them for years. It's like a dog and pony show.
Right, right.
You spell a lot of things. And I finally found what I was looking for, but I pity someone that...
Well, what, what is it that you're looking for that's not there?
Well, I was, I was looking for the budget.
Well, we're, we're not, this is the budget. I mean, yeah, you're looking, if you're looking for the Excel spreadsheet.
This is the year ending 2017. I want the budget for the one we're going to vote on.
Yeah, he's talking about the working budget.
The working budget. Yeah, the work, the, the budget we're going to vote on is in the...
Financials, it should be in this section.
Yeah, it should be in here. It should be right at the top.
I may have missed the whole thing because I, I kept going through those pages and...
Where did it go?
Oh, I thought maybe you were in the wrong one, because this does look like the audit one.
This is, this is...
Oh, this is the audit.
Professional audit.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the professional audit section.
Maybe my links are, are mixed.
Yeah, maybe the links are, the, that is, the links are wrong.
That says audit final.
Yeah, you clicked on this one. Click on the audit final, maybe, maybe...
Yeah, well, I'm looking at, down here in the, in, down here, it tells me what I'm about to click on. That says audit. And that says audit, so I made a mistake.
Well, I'm looking to get school here because I'd like to study.
All right, yeah, I got to fix that. I'll fix that tonight. Yeah, it's in the one called financials, if I did it right, so.
It's in there somewhere?
Yeah.
Well, I went through the whole thing.
Well, he's got to fix it now, Murd.
I didn't see what...
Yeah, yeah, I'll take care of that. Sorry about that.
As I say, I do have, you know, the town report, portion of it. We got sections.
Right, right. You know, our goal this year was to reevaluate whether or not, you know, every household wanted that 500 line spreadsheet sent to them in the mail. And so we're urging people to get it online and we're trying to make the main report more relevant and then break out the more detailed stuff and people can pick and choose how much of the data they want to get into.
I thought for a couple of years, we talked about this. And I thought we were going to send out a postcard and people could tell you whether I want a town report...
Get it in the mail today. I got it in the mail today.
I know. But that's not what I'm talking about.
Oh.
You'd have to send it out quite early. But I thought we were going to send out a card saying, I want a town report, or I'll come in and pick it up. I want it mailed to me or I want to pick it up. And then give them a date that they've got to have that request in so you know how many town reports to print. But that isn't what we did. I think it's three tenths of 1% the cost of the town reports. And people are paying $2,000, $3,000 in taxes, I think they should be able to get a town report.
They can get a town report.
Without jumping all through kinds of hoops. I realize...
Just give Dave a call, he'll send it to you.
You get, I know you get a pile of them over there at the town, at the post office. I realize that. But I think a person should have the right to request one.
They do. Just give us a call and we'll send it to you.
You're going, you're going to send it?
Yeah.
The way I read it didn't say whether you'd mail it or what you were going to do.
Well, we would, we would prefer people stop in and pick it up, but if they want it sent to them, we'll send it to them.
Not everybody's going to do that.
Yeah, yeah. No, we're not, we're not keeping it from anybody. All right. Thank you.
Don't forget to vote.
Right, yeah. So as action items, there was, Dave's going to look into a color printer and I'm going to fix the website some more.
I was going to ask you about the color printer. How, what size page you printed on?
Oh, it'll only do eight and a half by 11.
I have a $100 color printer, it's the most beautiful thing you can...
Yeah, they're, they're not much. The, the only expense, when I first got here and it came up, is the one down... The only expense, when I first got here and it came up, is the one downstairs, our main one, that prints nearly everything here. If you, if you get a color version of that and don't even use it often, it's much more expensive. We're talking about desktop then.
And some color, that thing, it's got five cartridges.
Yeah.
It goes...
So the cartridges in no time, which is why you want to print color very little. Yeah.
You're fine, thank you for coming in.
Have a good night.
Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else have anything?
Nope.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, from Tony, said goodbye Ken, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.